Okay, we're back on the record for the public hearing of February 2nd, 2016. We continue with the continuing hearing calendar. Items 15, 240, 14 B.C., 1620 Shore Boulevard, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon. I'm Gregory Tyrone, the applicant. I hope you find this a lot easier than the last hearing you had. I did have a chance this time to review in detail the YouTube video of the executive session yesterday and certainly prepared to address all the issues that you raised. Specifically, if you don't mind, I'll just start with the floor area. Allow me to say that in my statement of facts, I had indicated that there would be a certain partial demolition, but I failed to really make that much more clear, how they're going to leave enough of the house so that they can be enlarged. I'm going to get you a diagram for that. I've talked with the architect and believe that I can demonstrate to you exactly how they intend to, through the construction, retain the necessary required foundation wall.
And that you're going to have to lift that also.
Excuse me?
That you're going to have to lift what's existing.
Lift?
So the thing is, it's not the foundation wall because foundation is not floor area. It's your first floor and it's bearing walls or side walls, like the floor area, right? So it can't just be that there's a foundation and which has to be lifted anyway, right? You should talk to, I don't know if this architect has experience doing this, but there are ones who do work in this area who have experience with how you continue to retain floor area and expand.
Okay.
Or lift.
Okay, fine. So I'll have him address that. You indicated that the 1946 survey shows the, of course, the side yards. I gave you information. I hope that it satisfied you that the side yards were pre-existing 61. The difficulty is in the rear yard. And another small apology that there was an oversight, that you didn't get the updated survey of the property. I have a few for you if you would like to. I think, look, we did ask the dimension of 19 feet, 8 inches to the rear yard. Pardon me.
That's the existing rear yard?
That's the, as the existing rear yard, and that's what's on the BZ analysis. Now, we have painstakingly tried to find ways to get pictures, something of the rear yard to show pre-61, some kind, the incursion into the rear yard. We have not been able to get anything, either the Department of Finance or anywhere else. I've checked with other attorneys working on homes in this exact same area. They had the same problems. Nobody's ever been able to get any good information. So then I would ask for you, what do I do from here? I did provide some time ago, it was requested by Mr. Segovia, my first chat with him, about the rear yard setback diagram that Urban Cardiographers had done for me. And I, it's in the materials, but it'll show several, many homes with less than, much less sometimes the area.
Before you make that argument, we don't have the authority to grant anything more under a 73-622 special permit, anything more than a 20-foot side yard.
Rear yard.
So, so what you're showing is an existing condition is not only an illegal existing condition, but we can't cure it in this special permit. So, right, so at the very least, it would need to be cut back to create a full 20-foot rear yard, and that's provided you can make the argument that a 20-foot rear yard is an appropriate condition in this location. Okay, so we can't help but get to a 19-foot rear yard under a 73-622 special permit.
You're saying that we have to have 20 feet, not 30, 20 feet?
No. 30 is the legal condition. So right now, your building is illegal in the rear because you have the 30-foot rear yard. But under the 73-622 special permit, the maximum rear yard we can, or the minimum rear, rear we can give you is 20.
I see.
Okay?
Yes?
So, and, but, that assumes that you make the, a successful argument that the rear yards adjacent will not be negatively impacted by your, by your, in other words, that it fits in with neighborhood character.
Right.
And so, so to that discussion, there were discussions about, you talk about distances where there's 17-foot rear yards and so on, but those are really far away. Talking about an immediate area, you need to talk, you need to make an argument for the immediate area of your proposed rear yard. And what I understand on the plans is, which is different than your site plan, it's kind of confusing because your, your, your survey shows that the adjoining property to one side that is built almost full to the lot line, but some of that's porch and some of that's only a one-story extension. And probably not a legal extension, but anyway, it's a one-story extension. And then on the other side, do you have, and the other side, you have 20 feet.
Yeah.
Right?
It's kind of confusing.
It is confusing.
It's like it patries past the 20-foot line.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's not clear what's going on. And also, but according to your survey, it looks like it would probably be like. Yeah, so, you know what it is? It's the survey and the Sanborn map that was provided to make the argument for the rear yard don't have anything to do with each other. So the Sanborn map that was provided by Urban Cardiographics to make the rear yard argument, it shows that the building to, what is, oh, that's the west, the building to the west.
16 and 18.
Has a 20-foot rear yard. And the building to the east has basically no rear yard.
Correct.
But your survey actually shows that the building to the west, yeah, that the building to the west, yeah, has what looks like close to a, well, I don't know what it is, maybe it's a 20-foot, I don't know what it is.
Maybe it's like 20 feet.
Yeah.
What survey are you?
There's only one, there's a little one-story extension. It's only one story there.
Right.
Maybe the cutback point is 20, I don't know, maybe it's, the cutback is more that you have really a 26-foot rear yard or something on the adjoining property to the west.
My understanding is 20.
Really, it's one story. And on the other side, it looks like it's the same, which makes sense. They're all built together, they're all, they were all lining up in some spot.
Right.
Yeah.
So anyway, I've got four inches that I, that we're, that we're talking about here that, are you indicating that we would have to then design this building until we take four inches off the back of the building?
Not really. No, you're not listening, really.
No, no, let's do this again. If you look at your survey.
Yes.
The survey is giving information about the adjoining properties on either side, right?
Yes.
So the idea is, those are the properties that are telling you something about what standard for the rear yard conditions, which are already severely reduced beyond what's permitted as of right, like 30 foot, right? So what it's, what they're saying is, to the one side, it's not the mention, but maybe it's a 26-foot rear yard, 27, 24-foot rear yard, to the one, to the east. Yeah, okay. So the idea is to be informed by what your neighbors are really doing and that our Urban Cardiographics map does not show what appears to be the actual conditions, right? It doesn't match.
The actual conditions of all, of the neighbors?
Yeah, so Urban Cardiographics often does these types of maps, right?
My question was a little different. I'm listening to you. My question is if, if the zoning resolution under which I brought this application will not allow you to alter the rear yard has to be 20 feet, and I have 19 feet, 8 inches.
No, no, misunderstanding, okay. We have the authority to allow a rear yard to be as shallow as 20 feet. But that's only if you make the other findings, which include that the proposal comports with neighborhood character.
I understand.
So the neighborhood character is what drives the actual dimension of the, of the waiver that you can obtain.
Okay.
Your cannot be for anything less than 20 feet.
That's what I'm saying.
But, but, the, but we might, less than 20 feet of a rear yard.
Right.
What we're saying is that your adjoining properties are indicating that your request can't be 20 feet, it needs to be more like 24 feet, something like that. Something that's more in alignment with what, with what the neighbors are showing. Based on, based on our sort of guessing, because we don't have these exact dimensions on the survey of what the neighbors are doing. But we do see that there's a one-story extension on the west.
Yes, that's correct.
And so that, that informs the height of the extension. And on the east, it looks like it's two stories all the way to about 24 feet or something like that.
Chair, I'm just looking at the lot coverage diagram that was submitted previously. And I don't know if that will be helpful in, in our assessment. The lot coverage diagram, which I think was, which was submitted dated 9/29.
Why, are the Sanborn drawings more accurate?
No, I think the lot coverage, I found the lot coverage a little bit more informative because the drawings were a lot clearer.
Oh, the drawings are different than more? No, but, so that's the thing, they're not, they're not probably accurate because the survey, unless the survey are made of mistake, which happened, the survey shows that the building to the east is not built full to its lot line. It shows it built only to, I don't know, 24 feet with a 24-foot rear yard plus a one-story, a terrace at the first floor. The other side, the building towards the west, looks pretty much like it's correct on this lot coverage diagram. So the impact that this building would be having is on its neighbors to the immediate east and west and not especially to the, on the neighbor to the south.
Yes.
Are you understanding?
Not entirely. I, you, I, I'm trying to figure out what I need to do.
Reduce the depth of your building.
That's what I said.
But not by 20.
By?
Or feet or some number like that. If you look at your survey, we can't tell you the exact number because the survey's not giving us that.
I mean, I would recommend that we have information that, that is consistent across the application and that is accurate for what's actually on the ground. I think that, that, I mean, the board has to make decisions based on that. And so what we're saying to you is that we have probably two or three different pieces of information and they seem to contradict each other.
Well, so, well, the survey should be correct.
Well, the survey should be correct, but it doesn't have all of the, you know, doesn't show the full information on the neighbors, so we need that.
So what I'd suggest also is, it sounds like you're kind of new to these 73-622 special permits, so maybe a conversation with Mr. Singer, our executive director, would be helpful.
Okay, yeah.
Right? And so he can explain better how this goes, because this is kind of meat and potatoes for a lot of the other people who appear here. They just know, they speak it, they speak this lingo already and it's new. So, so that, that's the first thing, okay? So you're gonna need to look at your survey, clarify with your survey what the dimensions are on the adjoining properties, okay? Coordinate the survey with the Urban Cardiographics map, because that's incorrect. And then make a proposal that's based on what you learned from the survey information. Okay? And so what you're doing though, is your, your application, which doesn't say it now, is an application to legalize an existing rear yard condition with modifications because you haven't made a case for it to be, well, you can't have it be what is existing at 19, 20 feet. And you haven't made a case for it to be 20 feet. But there is a case for it to be something like a 24-foot rear yard. So make that case.
Okay.
Okay? And so the next question that I had, there were other questions. So we had.
The side yards, and they were.
No, so, okay, so the side yard, you've established that the side yard incursion, isn't even the incursion, when you're, what you're doing is, since you're now applying for a rear yard extension, it's a rear yard extending that existing non-compliant side yard, right?
Just vertically.
It's both horizontally and vertically. Horizontally because the incursion into the 30-foot rear yard is also an extension extending the side yard incursion.
That's true, but not with the jet, the jet out. The jet out doesn't.
Not with the jet out, no, no, no. So it would retain the 3-foot.
Yes.
Right?
I think so, yeah.
And then, then the next question has to do with your vertical enlargement. So my question was, your vertical enlargement is very tall. It's 14 feet high to the peak. And I'm not sure that you've made a case that that, that the massing of the building comports with neighborhood character to compare it to the other buildings. So one way to address that, it's only a bedroom. So you have a double-height living room?
Yes.
So for one, you could put them, why can't you put the master bedroom on the second floor?
Well, because the first floor, the first floor over the garage cellar.
Right.
Is of course the, the main floor, if you will, the first floor.
Right.
As we like to say. And then that's where the fireplace is. We wanted to have the two-story high with the big living room to have heat rise up and have the, the master bedroom on the third floor. That was the idea.
Right, but so if the, so there's two options. Either you're gonna need to make, you need to make an argument that's successful, that this very tall proposal is consistent with neighborhood character.
Okay.
It's a required finding, right? And at the moment, it doesn't look like it. In addition to which, your peak is super high. You have a 14-foot-high floor to peak height. So you could easily bring that down a lot. That would reduce the impact of your proposed third floor, which really reads like a fourth floor on the neighborhood. It reads like a fourth floor because your cellar is actually on the grade, right?
That garage is a cellar.
This is what happens when all these buildings are lifted, but it's, but.
We have, three homes surrounding this all have third floors on each side.
So you didn't show us.
And one was already, well, because I didn't have the opportunity, wasn't raised the last time, but I will show you that, right behind this at 116 Oxford Street, which you, which this board approved a year ago, has three stories. But I, anyway, I understand, that's what I'll have to put into my statement of fact and show it to you, that I think it does blend into the neighborhood and is like the other homes immediately adjacent to it.
Okay.
Three homes with three-floor bedrooms with three stories. 16 and 18 Shore Boulevard, 116 Oxford, and the other one in Northford. The one on the corner is just no side yard, hardly any setbacks at all, and it's, it's right to the max. So I believe this house does, and I will show you that it does blend in with the others in the neighborhood.
Okay, show us and indicate where those houses are located relative on the map, relative to this house.
Sure.
So we can understand the context. Show us with photographs and also show dimensions. We need to know what the heights of those buildings are also. Okay? Also, there was a very big concern about the appendix G compliance.
Yes.
I want the answer.
Yeah, want to ask you something about that. And it's just a curiosity that I have is that, you had raised this before about the fact that a cellar, or, excuse me, crawl space cannot be excavated more to create the garage that my client wanted to create. So now we're going to the first floor, and they kept windows in it. They're thinking that you need windows in case water came in and then it would go out.
No, those are, those are.
They're not allowed. Windows are not allowed and doors not allowed inside the cellar.
You said, you're saying they're not?
They're not, is that right? Is that what, that's?
Well, the ground floor, the cellar space has to be wet floodproofed, which means whatever's there has to be a water-resistant, well, you have to read it, appendix G. Has to be water-resistant material, so the existing bungalow can't, those walls can't remain there.
That's what I was taking from that. So what do we do to replace it? Can we replace it?
No, 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 you have to lift the existing building.
You have to lift it up.
Right. Because you have to maintain the existing floor area.
There, that's it, right.
And then you have to put on, you know, on the ground floor, like concrete, things like that.
Okay.
Then you have to, you can't have like an enclosed floor. I mean, it can be partially enclosed, but you're gonna have to have flood openings, you know, for the.
That was my question, exactly, yeah.
For the easy entry and exit of floodwaters.
Right, right.
So the way you have it shown here is that you've got walls and windows, those windows are above the base flood elevation, and doors like it's another floor of a home.
I see.
So you're gonna have to modify that with whatever the building's department is accepting as being compliant with appendix G.
And then there were issues about measurements?
Well, your architect measured height and perimeter wall height from the first floor.
Right, should be from.
It should be from the flood-resistant construction elevation.
All right, all right.
Which it does have indicate, that's where you measure your height.
Yes.
So you have to re-indicate your perimeter wall height and your building height. And in addition, regarding the mitigation measures, it's the height of the first floor above curb level. He's taking it as being the height of the first floor above grade, adjacent grade. So you have to find out what the curb level is, which is not on your survey, and if it's above nine feet, because you're on the borderline right now, then you need either one or two mitigation measures.
Got you. Thank you. I understand.
And there was the issue about the parking space needing 18 feet open area.
Yeah, I was thinking about that, but I'm, you know, there is this wide city-owned area, and I'm not sure if the building department considers that part of the open area.
I, it's my understanding, it's on the BZ zoning analysis that the, that the proper front yard setback here, under zoning regulations 23-45A, is 15 feet, not 18.
Right, but if you have a, a parking area within the street wall, a garage behind the street wall, then when you back out, you need 18 feet. But considering the fact that there's city-owned property, I'm not sure if they would consider that.
Right, I was gonna ask you about, you have about 14 extra feet.
I don't know how it's interpreted.
You, you.
But that may not be an issue. Does anybody know?
From, from the building, from the end of the building.
Is it, is it city-owned land or is it mapped street?
No, it's city-owned land. There's at least, I would say, 15 feet of city-owned land on Shore Boulevard beyond their property line.
Okay.
Which is grassy area.
So why would you?
Look at whether or not the, they consider the, where the built street is for the.
For Shore Boulevard.
For the map, for the plate, like how you determine the yard depth. It's, I'll have to look at the text.
Okay.
It's, there's nuance there. And I don't remember it all.
Right, so, but, I forget what this section is. The section that explains what the depth of the front yard is, which you refer, should be referring to in your zoning calculation sheet, the BSA zoning calculation sheet, has a little note. And the footnote says, but, when there's parking, that will be pulling, essentially located between the street wall of the building and the curb.
Mm-hmm.
And the property line.
And the street line.
And the street line. Then you have to provide 18 feet. The whole point of that is that when you pull out of your driveway, you're not pulling onto.
A street.
Way, right?
Right.
So that's where, we don't really know what the rule is here because that is the public way, even if it's, because it's owned by the city.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So you may not be allowed to have that parking in this location, and we can't, we don't have the authority to waive this.
Unless he provides the 18 feet at the first floor.
18 feet to the first floor, yeah.
To the garage door from the property.
So we have to move the building back three feet then.
Well, you have to move the garage door back.
The garage door, the garage.
Yes, because you already have an overhang, I believe.
Yes.
In your plans, I believe there's an overhang on the.
Yeah.
The second floor. No, there is.
There's a slight overhang there that's.
No, that's just a balcony.
It's just a balcony, looking at it, ma'am.
It's just a balcony.
The second, that's up. We don't really have any extra space there. So I'm hoping we can use the city's, the city part there is, there's 25 feet from the property line to the curb.
Yeah.
And that's what runs up all along the whole street, everybody.
Right. It's where the street starts, not where the.
Isn't the street line measured, it's your property.
Might be a different zoning law.
This is something your architect might need to verify or just decide to move back the wall of the, of that first floor level, of the cellar level. Because we don't have any authority to waive it.
Mm-hmm.
All right, what was, oh, and then I did notice there was an error on the zoning calculation sheet, which talks about.
Side yard.
Side yard depth, it's not correct.
You have to correct it to, it's, it's correct to reflect the data and the survey.
Right.
Which would be three, and I think it's 3.2.
3.4.
It'll match the survey. Okay.
Okay, that was it.
Right.
Are there any speakers on this?
Oh, one other question. You had in your statement something about how there were DOB plans that were approved?
My, my, it's my description error, I could have been a little bit more clear about it. There were no further objections until this board, of course, rules on it.
Oh.
And then, once the building, then we, once applied for the building permit, once you've already decided, then they, then there's certain things they have to do. So there were no further comments, is what it is.
Okay.
The objections are carried over until you decide. Those further objections can't be dealt with until then.
Okay.
I'll clear that up for you in the statement of facts.
Okay.
And the DOB, is that, ma'am, my, my understanding is, until you rule, and then we go to DOB building permit, then they can decide on the curb cut, deal with the curb cuts. So there hasn't been actually a decision yet, there can't be, as I understand it, until you have actually decided on this application.
All right, so, you know, something I have to do, something I need to do.
It seemed to be about it. Hope that's easier than the last application. Now, may I ask you, what is the soonest we could get back here and how I could facilitate this? This has been.
Okay, well, you need to do, you need to make these changes to the drawings.
Can be done very quickly. They're already, I could tell you're already underway today, some of them.
The drawings are already underway?
Well, some of these changes that you've talked about, they're already working on the diagram for certain things, they've already.
We have raised some questions about the consistency, neighborhood character, the survey, and, and we need to make sure all those documents are consistent. And the survey is also, if that is the correct one, then you.
That's what we think, but the survey needs, we need more information on the survey of the distance to the rear walls of the adjoining properties.
Right.
From their rear lot lines.
Right.
And that will drive the depth of your proposal, your proposed first, your proposed floors that are incurred, that are imposing into the rear yard, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then you need to make an argument for why the height of your building supports with neighborhood character. And what I'd suggest, because I know it's hard to take notes while you're appearing, we, we're taped on video.
I'm aware of that.
You should listen to this tape.
I will.
And make sure that you go through all the points.
I certainly will.
And that if you don't, is there something you don't understand, please do call Ryan Singer and ask.
I'm more than happy to do that.
Okay, so I'm thinking we need a month to answer these questions.
I, I would hope I can do it a lot sooner than a month, but as soon as you can.
We would rather you do it correctly so we don't have to keep this going.
Well, I'd like to do the same, ma'am. And I'm not here to make your job harder, nor am I.
Good, so how about a, how about a submission on March 2nd for the next hearing? Good, so, how about a, how about a submission on March 2nd, for the next hearing on March 22nd?
Okay. Wednesday, March 2nd, I thought.
Yes, for a hearing on March 22nd, which is Tuesday.
For a hearing on March 22nd, that's the soonest we could do this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I'm giving you enough time to answer the questions.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 164415BZ, 145 Central Park North.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners Calvin Wong, Acrumen LLP. Um, we attended the board's executive review session yesterday, um, and we'd like to briefly respond, uh, to some of the concerns that were raised by the commissioners. Um, to begin, just as the board is aware, we've reduced the height of the proposed building by an additional 10 feet, so that it's now 124 feet, 11 inches, and we've reduced the, or we've eliminated the penthouses and put in bulkheads. Um, the overall building is less than five feet taller than the 120 limitation, uh, that the underlying district permits. Uh, the chair raised a question about the size of the remaining bulkheads, and in response, uh, we've changed the size of, of those bulkheads, and we have Tom Gluck here to also discuss the amendments to the roof, as well as, uh, some changes to the rear of the building.
Tom Gluck from Gluck Plus, the architects. Um, so, as Calvin mentioned, we reduced the bulkhead to the minimum. You can see now, it follows the stair, providing, uh, head height, and then just enough room to legally access the door and make it a safe condition. Um, so, that was one, one issue. I think there was a question regarding the trash chute. Um, by code, uh, DOB sees the trash chute as a high hazard shaft, so it must daylight through the roof, um, and it must be six feet taller than any roof within 10 feet of it. Um, so, whether or not, right now, I think the plans are showing a door in it, whether it's there or not, um, that shaft must continue all the way up, that's a, they see that as a, I guess, had a high hazard item in the building. Um, I believe there is a question regarding elevator access to the roof. Um, we are required, um, to provide equal and op, uh, equal access, uh, under the American Disabilities Act, once it's an occupied roof, to provide elevator service to that roof. Um, it is, uh, and so, that's why the elevators stop there.
There are two elevators.
There are two elevators, so one is required for that. Um, it's a shared shaft elevator, um, and with, with, uh, shared machine room, so, in, uh, in terms of the logistics of machine rooms and elevator design, they would run machine rooms up to this, even if one stop goes higher, it's overrun, will come from the roof, and then the second shaft would go up that high, whether there's a door or not. Um, and given the logistics and, um, operational issues with having one elevator that gets you there versus another one pressing the button and the control syst, the control, it's all doable, but it's, uh, a complication, and there's no major advantage, because the shaft would be the same height regardless. That's why we brought two up.
So, the question though, would, does it become a bulkhead? Um, no, so, both elevators have stopped there, so you don't get the advantage of a bulkhead when it has a stop.
So, it, uh, yes, that may be, and the lobby, you know, there are permitted obstructions-
Right.
-under the height, so that's why the height still remains at 12411.
Mm-hmm.
Um, from an FAR standpoint, they, there've been, it's been, there've been different interpretations on this, but if, in fact, it's an FAR, if it's FAR, including that lobby, uh, the 60 square foot lobby, then that, that square footage, obviously, when we, when we come back and, and get a determination on the actual zoning, we will, we're not asking for FAR relief, we will, the building will, in point of fact, hit exactly the FAR allowed, like, um, under its base, the, the current.
How are you gonna do, if you can add six?
So, it's two, it's roughly two, the, the, we're talking about roughly 200 square feet in, um, those two areas combined, because the stair is still a bulkhead, that's still exempt from FAR.
In our next mission, we're gonna go back and go through all the FAR calculations, double check-
Because your root core, there's this number, 595 square feet, I don't actually know what it's measuring, is it everything?
For, sorry, for which?
On your root plan, um, there's a number that says root core, 595 square feet, I don't know, is that, is that including the stair, bulkhead, and the elevators? What is that measuring?
I don't see that, what, what, can you, what page are you referencing?
The sheet you just gave us.
That's, that's, that was, that is not ZSF, that is just the area of the stair, and that's more for, that's like net, that's how much enclosed space we have.
But, so, again, we'll, we'll take a look and make sure that all the areas that need to be counted for zoning floor area will be counted for zoning-
But, I can tell you what that number references is, is the, the full, the exterior, outside face of exterior wall of the stair, the lobby, and the elevator shaft.
Okay, so, some part of that-
About 200 or so.
Is floor area.
Correct.
So, you can't, you're at just enough sweet moment of your maximum floor area, so, the floor area, something has to happen.
Right.
Where are you gonna-
And we can, we can, we can address this in a resubmission in terms of the calculations, but, um, we feel like there's a way to do that within the envelope of the building, given mechanical deducts and all the rest of it that are still in flux, because we haven't designed the whole building yet.
Okay. So, you had something like 385 square feet, something like that, per floor deducts?
Uh, correct.
Yeah, so, now you're gonna have 395.
Well, over 11 floors, 200 square feet, it's a, you know, 20 feet more per floor.
We'll, we'll address that, um, and then the rear.
And then the other, sorry, the, the other thing, and I think you have another, Calvin, um, there's a, the other issue, I understand, um, was the appearance of the rear wall, uh, so this is the north-facing wall. Okay, so I'll do one at a time, the, um, the rear wall, uh, of the, so it's the north-facing wall, which is the, facing the rear yard of the neighbors to the north, um, and we're proposing some sort of treatment of, so the, the rear neighbors are sunken by about 13 feet, so they're below our grade level. So, that wall, the first 13 feet of it is necessarily a concrete wall, um, but we're proposing some kind of, uh, printing or pattern, or, or something to have it, um, to, to a decorative pattern of some sort. And then, once we hit our grade, then we, we're proposing infill between the columns, structural columns, a, a recessed panel, and then a planter with, um, a green that can grow both up and down. Um, the, the, up to the 13 feet, it's actually a retaining wall, so it's necessarily, um, a structural concrete wall, but above that, we have flexibility to treat that, uh, and the greenery, we think, will help, um, will just provide a better-looking, softer, uh, and, and we believe, and we've done this in other jobs, if we plant the right species, they can both grow, they naturally want to grow up, but there's some plants that will grow down, and that'll help also soften the impact of the existing condition, which is a sunken rear yard.
So, um, and what's the material, or, my concern was that you, that you would be treating the sides, and the, well, mostly the sides, as not our problem in somebody else's side, but it's actually the side of a building.
Yeah, no, very much. I mean, you, in the, in all the renderings and all the street perspectives, I mean, you can make a good case for any building in a urban context that's seen more bleakly, that that side elevation is as much or more potentially of a front, uh, from the pedestrian. So, it's a very important, uh, surface for us. We're, um, haven't picked a specific material, but, and you can see in the rendering, it's treated as some kind of stone or masonry. Um, it's not a throwaway, because we don't expect it to be covered up. You know, if we were building next to an empty lot, and it were the same, then, then we might not invest in it, because it might, very shortly, in today's environment, be covered, but in this case, we see that as, uh, as an important part, and as, as does ownership of the building.
Okay, so, could you make a note on the plans, about, you don't have to be specific about what your materials are, I understand it's changing as the design moves, but just a note about the treatment on the sides and on the rear?
Sure.
Because obviously, even on your elevations, oh, your front elevation, you can see that it's over elevation, so, uh, but whereas the others look kind of empty and sad, so if you could-
Sure, it's all about material, there's, there's no windows, there's, the none, has none of those, has very few of those things, so that's no problem at all.
Um, there was also a question, or some discussion, rather, regarding the elimination of parking entirely within the building. Um, eliminating parking spaces would not only reduce the value of the project by approximately $4 million, which would be from the parking sales, but also would result in a significant devaluation of the floor area in the building. Because in order to fill in the currently proposed parking area with other floor area, we'd have to take space from the uppermost floors, which are the most valuable floors, and between the loss in parking sales, and you, for 1,600 square feet of additional residential, it just doesn't offset, um, or even come close to offsetting, um, the loss.
Well, it's not 1,600 square feet of residential, then you could use the cellar for amenity space, you'd have that whole floor to have as residential, except for the lot, not 1,600.
Okay, still, the, the, the numbers wouldn't, wouldn't offset each other. Um, and there was some discussion on, on the environmental impact of these, um, parking spaces, and we have, uh, Don Tone from Sam Schwartz, uh, to come here up and speak.
Good afternoon, my name's Don Tone, I'm a senior project manager and traffic engineer with Sam Schwartz Engineering. Um, Calvin asked me to come today to speak, uh, um, in regards to a, a recent letter we received from, uh, Mr. King from Columbia University, that expressed some concerns they had about the congestion, about parking, about some safety issues. Um, we don't, um, agree with, um, Mr. King's assessment, um, for the following reasons, um, in regards to congestion, as a traffic engineer, um, when we look to a development like this, first thing we ask ourselves is how much traffic the site is gonna generate? And for the proposed 33 dwelling units, we look to the established methodologies and procedures outlined in the city's, uh, secret manual, for trip rates. So, for a development this size, it's gonna generate less than 20 trips per day, and using the same established trip rates for the peak hours, it's gonna be one or two trips per the peak hour. To give you a reference, as a lot of you already know, to even get to the threshold that trips a detailed study, you would require 50 trips for the facility's peak hour, which we are nowhere near. So, it, it reflects a very, what it tells us is a very, very low intensity of use, uh, in regards to the traffic, and therefore, a very low intensity congestion in both, um, the duration and intensity. In regards to the, uh, safety and parking concerns, obviously, you know, the, the design standards for driveways will be followed in the design of the driveway, um, and the comment in regards to losing parking on street, uh, I don't think parking's permitted on street today on that side of the roadway, so, that's not correct. Um, in addition to that, Sam Schwartz also looks at things, um, in addition to the secret manual, in addition to the design guidelines, that further gives us confidence in this, in this application. Um, what is it regard to the, the width of the sidewalk, that provides, uh, a lot of good visibility for, for vehicles exiting the garage, and visibility between the pedestrians and those vehicles. Sometimes you see in, in, um, some of the, well, around midtown, even around Madison Square Garden, where the, the sidewalks are, could be five to seven or eight feet, and vehicles exiting garages can immediately take up a third of the sidewalk. Um, our sidewalks are in excess, I believe, of 20 feet, so, there, there's plenty of opportunities for a vehicle to enter the sidewalk in a safe manner. Uh, we also make other recommendations that, uh, can further improve visibility, such as, uh, not putting any planters or, or, um, any kind of obstructions, uh, in immediately adjacent to the driveways, to further improve the, the visibility. Um, the last point that Mr. King makes regarding, um, subway access is, is a very good point in that, uh, the, the site does offer a very convenient and accessible public transit. And when we look at some of the, the projections that we make in regards to traffic using the secret manual, there's nothing really subjective about those, they're established rates for planning purposes, and many times they're, they're, they're conservative. In reality, because of the access the transit offers, um, the intensity of use can even be, if, be less. You may find that these parking spaces are being utilized a couple times a month, a couple times a week, as a value-added amenity for people to, I don't know, visit their family or friends out in Long Island. So, um, in summary, uh, we appreciate Mr. King's review of the application, but we don't agree with him for the, for the following reasons.
What about the bus interference with the bus stop?
Um, because of the intensity of the use and the probability of the two buses pulling up simultaneously, uh, I, I don't think it's a, it's a, gonna be a frequent occurrence, and it would be very limited in duration, as well as the intensity of the congestion that's created. I think we have about 115 or 120 feet between our driveway and the corner, and then there's some relief, I don't know exactly where the bus stop's located, but I think it would be about in excess of 100 feet to the driveway. You consider that each bus is about 40 feet in length, and some of the articulated ones are 60.
The articulated.
Yeah, they're 60 feet. So, there could be enough queue space of, of one regular bus and one, even articulated bus, before it starts infringing on the ducts of the driveway.
Say that again, about there, how many, what?
Could you, if you, if it's about 100 feet, you could have enough, uh, queuing space for one regular bus at 40 feet, and articulated bus at 60 feet, before it starts to extend back where it actually encroaches access to the driveway.
So, it is common that you see two buses back up against each other, that happens all the time, so, then what happens? So, if you have two buses, one stop, and the other one's essentially waiting to pull one to the bus stop?
Mm-hmm. Uh, if it's a right turn coming in, there would be no obstruction, because he could access, if it was a left turn crossing over, uh, he'd have to wait until it was cleared to make the movement. But you take that within the context of the, the one to two per peak hour, and the probability of the two buses being there, and the duration that there's two there, you know, they, they don't stay there very long. It's, it's, as I mentioned, it wouldn't be a, infrequent and not result in any intensive congestion.
Does anybody have any questions about that?
And we'll provide that in writing as well.
Thank you.
Okay, with a diagram, because there's a diagram right now that shows the bus stop, but it doesn't show what would happen if you have two of those articulated buses lining up.
Sure. Um, I believe there was one question that Monsieur Freeman would like to respond to as well.
Good afternoon, Jack Freeman here on behalf of the applicant. I think that the chair had a question regarding, um, soft costs, and I'd just like to get some clarity and answer it.
So, you like to get authority?
Yeah, I, you, the, at the executive session, it wasn't-
Yeah, so-
-explained as to what the question was.
So, I said that there are soft cost calculations that have arithmetical errors that escalate the numbers based on percentages, so the clarification would be to go back and do the math on the percentages.
Well, I have taken, okay, that is what I did do, and, uh, I think you were perhaps discussing the construction loan, uh, line, which is, has an interest rate of 5%, but the loan itself and the amount of interest is what shows up on the column, and it's not directly arithmetic. You can't look at a PDF and understand what it is. The loan amount, or the interest paid on the loan, is determined by taking the rate, which is 5%, dividing it by 12 months, so you get a monthly rate, and then multiplying that by the construction period, and the assumption is, uh, industry standard would say that the amount of interest you're paying is basically half, because the loan is never fully outstanding until the end of the loan period. So, the way one calculates the construction loan interest amount is to take the monthly rate, multiply it by the construction period, and then multiply it by the construction loan amount, and then divide it by two, so that you have a half-life of the amount of loan interest, and I'll be glad to explain that in, in writing. So, it's not directly arithmetic.
Okay, so, if in future, since you're providing us with these percentages, right, but the percentages, we don't know what they're related to, if you, in future, on all of your analyses, you always show, what's the math that arrives at these things, and what they're percentages of? For instance, there's another one that's, what's it, condo co-op, no, I'm sorry, DOB fees, 25%.
Yeah, we, I've described that in the past, I'll be glad to re, re-
But it's not a one-time description, it's every time you make these submissions because nobody knows what they refer to.
But the rate that's shown on the construction loan is described in the narrative in the report. It's assumed 5% construction loan interest rate.
Right.
It's not a percentage of the loan amount, it's the rate that's used to derive the interest paid.
But you arrive at a number, so how do we know if the number's accurate? Because I have to say, I've done math and I find other numbers to be inaccurate when it's just a straight multiple.
I will describe that and do my best to try to provide a description on a regular basis.
Okay, so. No, I'm not, I just want you to go back and look at the.
Sure. And I will then reiterate what the DOB fees are determined. The simplest way to think of the interest rate is if you had a one-year construction period, you start on your first drawdown, but over that one year, at the end of the year, you have your whole loan drawn out. So you usually take the loan at a, at a kind of half-life times the interest rate. Now here we have a, a construction period of 26 months, so we start by looking at what the monthly rate is and then we look at what the total construction period is. It, it's confusing, I can understand, because it comes out to be something in the neighborhood of about 5.42%, and it's, looks like it might have a direct relation to the 5%, but it doesn't. And I can explain that math.
That would be good.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Is there any speakers on this? Please come on. Please state your name to the record and you'll have three minutes.
Francine James, good afternoon. First of all, I'd like to point out that this project has been opposed by the Community Board, Community Board 10, Commissioner, Senator Bill Perkins, and there have been letters of opposition against the project as submitted to you. And as, the second point that I'd like to address is that I thought that the Commission ordered a transportation study last time. There was no transportation study that was submitted in the recent submissions. Professor King, who did oppose the parking garage, had nothing to respond to, so his letter as submitted was essentially generalities about the project and did not have the benefit of the expert who spoke on behalf of the developers. One thing that I would like to point out to the Commission is that the expert misspoke in that there aren't two buses that are close to the proposed garage, there are actually three buses that stopped there, the number two, the number three, and the number four. And oftentimes, there's a confluence of all of those buses pulling up together.
So the bus stop has those three buses that stop at it?
Yep, correct. In addition, where the adjoining building, there is sanitation along 110 Street and there's oftentimes, the sanitation trucks are pulling up at the same time. 110 Street is also one of the few east to west thoroughfares because you have Central Park there and you have Morningside Park further west, so it's used by emergency services vehicles on a regular basis, flying through. You have St. Luke's Hospital on the west side, you have Mount Sinai on the east side, traffic is flowing to those hospitals. Another point that potentially is not taken into consideration in the trip analysis that was done by the expert. Additionally, Central Park recently closed to vehicles, so you have Adam Clayton Powell Boulevard, you have all of the avenues having increased traffic, 110 Street having increased traffic because the circulation in Central Park is not the same that it used to be. In addition, delivery trucks routinely are up and down, cabs, 18-wheelers use it as a major route as well. And opposite the bus stop, which is on the north side of the street, you have three buses on the south side of the street. So if you have the garage, and, and you're going to put a curb cut there, so whenever there's a curb cut, it's encouraging illegal turns on 110 Street. There's a double yellow line on 110 Street, so I'm assuming cars will be illegally turning into that garage, backing up the buses that are going eastbound as well. So it's this, it's a confluence of events that I don't think are taken into consideration by the trip analysis. It's a safety risk. Additionally, what else is on my list here? I think that it's, it's so many different moving parts that it doesn't seem that eight or nine spaces are worth clogging up 110 Street because it's already very, very clogged with traffic, the, the flow of traffic. Additionally, pedestrians would suffer because undoubtedly the car would pull out of the garage, pause on the sidewalk as all of this traffic is happening, so now pedestrians have to stand and wait for the car to pull out. Yes, there's the CB line, there are other options. There's the 2-3 train, you don't even have to cross the street. There are the three buses that we described. There are other avenues that are available for the residents to take advantage of, but there is a lot going on and I hope that our views are taken into consideration by the Commission and I thank you.
Other names, other speakers?
So again, we'll provide the testimony that was offered today by, from Sam Schwartz in writing with the, with the diagrams addressing, you know, when this confluence of two buses or three buses occurs and the rarity of the single or double second trip per hour, what would happen?
Okay, I think that to the point of the speaker, that I, I understand that you've kind of got, that Sam Schwartz's office got on this very late, so they didn't really have a chance to take a careful look at this question. I think a careful look is in order where they actually go and they take a look at what the traffic conditions are there and see what the impact of what you're projecting is the two cars or whatever your projected departure and arrival is and about the subject of cars that are turning left into the site and so on. So I know Sam Schwartz's office has to kind of do this, so just to take a careful look at those issues which haven't really been looked at yet.
Okay.
All right, so.
Would it be possible to close the hearing and leave the record open for that submission as well as the revised plans that we just provided today?
Part of it is, you know, what we could do is we could say if we don't find out anything.
Sam Schwartz has not been involved in this process from, from the beginning. They, they provide the EAS, so we will have that information. It's not like they just looked at a plan yesterday.
No, but they haven't looked at this question is what I mean, because I know that there has been a more, more complete study, have they had a chance to really look at this?
And if the Board feels that it's necessary after reviewing the study, we're, we're happy to reopen the case.
You're happy to reopen the case? You know what I would say, I would say the better way to do this is if all of our concerns are addressed, then we can close and have, potentially have a decision on the same date.
Sure.
But I think there's an open question that needs to be addressed and we should close. So let's, let's, let's. I don't know how much time you need to do this study.
I think we have a time, two weeks, ten days?
Two weeks, ten days. Okay, so I think we have to do it on for March 22nd with a submission on March 2nd.
March 2nd.
On Wednesday night's opportunity to resubmit.
No, March 2nd is the, is when you submit.
Is there anything earlier?
For our March 22nd hearing. And otherwise, you would literally have to submit tomorrow for the 23rd of February.
Okay.
That's, those are your choices, so we don't have any.
Our schedules are full too.
Yeah, our schedule on March, yeah, March 8th is extremely full. So, but anyway, you would have to submit literally tomorrow.
Okay.
New cases, item number one, 214 feet. What?
Take a break.
Just a short recess?
Short recess?
Five minutes?
Five-minute recess, sorry.
Okay.